This time on the call to order, the August twenty first, twenty twenty four, Polly and Trail Management Council meeting. I will rise with very respects to the flag. After that, we'll have a pledge of allegiance and invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of America's citizens, America, and to the Republic for its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us all together in three townships and communities. In the name of the Lord Jesus, guide us with your words and thoughts. In the Lord's name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Okay, this time Secretary of State, please call roll. For him, as I said, the Polly and Trail Council members, Mr. Breakfield.
Here.
Mr. Pearson.
Here.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Gentlemen.
Here. Here, Mr. Watley.
Mr. Watley.
Here. Mr. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Noel.
Here.
McDonald, yes, here. Kevin.
The Orffs, council.
We have four of them. Okay, at this time, we will move on to approval of our agenda. We change the agenda. If not, I'm going to take the motion to approve the agenda as presented. I'll send it through. I'll second. Motion by Vice Chair Breakfield, second by Counselor Noel to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries on the consent agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda for June nineteen, twenty, twenty-four meeting minutes. The bill to be approved for June and July, financial reports for June and July, and the family report for July and August. Any questions, comments on the consent agenda? If not, I'm going to take the motion to approve those by roll call.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Support? Yeah, motion by Vice Chair Breakfield, second by Counselor Pfeiffer to approve the consent agenda. I'll do a roll call. Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Watley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
McDonald, yes. You want to work?
Yes, Mr. Pfeiffer.
The motion carries. Okay.
Ms. Breakfield.
I apologize.
That's all right.
Okay, so that, as you may have seen, onto public comments. Do you like the comments, sir? If not, can move on.
No comment.
All right, thank you. Okay, on the citizen rep report, Kevin, any report for us?
I have no report.
No report this month? Okay. Next up on our agenda is an open session to entertain a motion to go into a closed session. And there's a pending client for this matter that I've invited Attorney Hume May to come in and give us an overview on the situation within the letter. There's a motion in your packet to read to get us into closed session if you so choose. I'll maintain that motion if you'd like to, or read your own.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to enter in close session for MCL fifteen point two six eight, item one H. The term of conference communication.
Okay, also, put in there that the attendance can include members of the council, members that can attend the call session.
It doesn't include all council members as well as other members who can attend?
No, it includes Trail Manager Rand, the citizen rep, Green, as well. Attorney Hume May, second. Yeah, motion by Counselor Madore, second by Counselor Wildly to enter into a closed session meeting. To include those are in the motion and for the comments. If not, we'll call this to go into closed session. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Watley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
McDonald, yes. Mr. Madore?
Yes.
Mr. Breakfield?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Okay, motion, motion is carried. Camera will be off. We'll excuse all public except for those that were in motion to attend the closed session. We are going to proceed on to unfinished business, item nine A, jobs on the road to move up slash relocation status. So, we have an ongoing issue with the fence that we feel needs to be relocated because we feel we have ownership of the property. So, any further discussion from council? If not, I'll look for a motion. Secretary McDonald?
I'd like to offer a motion to authorize litigation regarding five thirty-nine jobs on the road as discussed in closed session. I'll second.
Okay, motion by Secretary McDonald, second by Vice Chair Breakfield to authorize litigation on the five thirty-nine jobs on the road. Any further questions or comments? If not, we will do a roll call, please, Secretary McDonald. Okay, for the motion, Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald, yes. Mr. Madore?
Yes.
Mr. Breakfield?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Definitely, yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Watley?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, all right. Lisa, thank you. Appreciate you coming down.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay, we'll move on to item ten A, under new business event request for Oriente Park Recreation. They are requesting to use part of the Polly and Trail for an event called the Dragon Trails Trail Athlon, scheduled for September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Any questions on the request? If not, I have a motion to approve this request so they can get their schedule.
I made a motion to approve the event as stated.
Second. Okay, I'll go with a motion by Counselor Pfeiffer, second by Counselor Noel to approve the event request for Oriente Park Recreation, U.S. portion of the Pauline Trail from the Dragon Trails Trail Athlon, scheduled for September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Onto picnic table placement on the House Road, Trail Manager Rand would like to place a picnic table on House Road, and she'll leave that according to the picnic table policy in place. Any further questions on that? Secretary McDonald?
I just want to recognize that this donation was thanks to Linda and her family over the passing of her father recently. So, Linda, it's much appreciated.
Thanks.
And I'll make a motion to authorize?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Secretary McDonald, second by Treasurer Pearson, who will rise to the Polly and Trail Management, Linda Rand, to place a picnic table on House Road for the requirements of the Polly and Trail Management Council picnic table policy. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Onto the twenty twenty-five proposed budget. This distributed out, council members, you'll see the revenues of expenditures balancing at one hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars. Any questions on the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, hearing none, most of you approve the budget as presented.
Support. I don't think you're making a motion. You sounded like it.
It did sound like it. Okay, all right, all right. Motion by Chair Person Wright, second by Counselor Madore to approve the twenty twenty-five Polly and Trail Management Council budget with revenues of expenditures balancing at one hundred thirty-seven, nine hundred ninety dollars. Any further questions or comments on the budget? If not, we'll do a roll call, Secretary McDonald. For the twenty twenty-five budget for the Polly and Trail Management Council, Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald, yes. Mr. Madore?
Yes.
Mr. Breakfield?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer? Yes.
Mr. Watley?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, on to item ten D, funding for upgrades between Lake George Road to Forest Street and Rochester Road. This is a request from Trail Manager Rand to get some additional funding for restructuring the area of that area of Lake George to Forest Street and Rochester Road. And the situation is that there's a possibility of getting MDNR monies for that. So, in order not to hold the project off, we're not expected to find out until, you know, September?
Yes.
Whether or not those monies are going to be allocated back to the Polly and Trail. If not, what we're looking for, Trail Manager Rand and I, is to get council approval of funding to move forward whether or not we receive the monies. If we receive the monies, we won't need the monies on request of fifty thousand dollars, unless it's an overwhelm of the monies we receive from the state. So, with that, either way, motion in the packet is going to authorize Trail Manager Rand to continue. But what we want to do is wait until the decision from the state. Because if we get, if we get those monies, we don't want to spend our own first and then lose the funding that the state is going to provide us. Counselor Madore?
What timeframe are you trying to get this work done before this winter, or is that...?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But what we're looking at is Trail Manager Rand would like to prep the area. She indicates she needs about four thousand dollars to do so. So, if the money's come and they, and the qualifications are what she wants to accomplish, you're within the grant of work, we should proceed with that. If it isn't, and the warrant isn't presented, then you're authorized and her to proceed with Polly and Trail funds. Yeah, that's all, that's how that works, that's how that's structured. So, is there any further?
No question. So, the work you're doing in preparation of that wouldn't be eligible or grant refundable then, right?
I don't know. Depends on the details of the grant, the bigger she wanted.
Thank you, Pierce. I had requested fifty thousand additional dollars from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources to continue with maintenance that we've been doing this summer. They should know in September if we will be getting those funds. Once it's signed off, we have access to this money. We can start spending that money. I don't know if it's going to be September, if we get it, October, you know, the DNR. We can do this prep work up until November, up until the ground is frozen. So, if we get the money, we'll know. We can do some prep work this winter and go into the winter in good shape, start fresh in the spring. If we don't get the money, I kind of want to get the prep work done this year, either way, just because it is in a state of just repair. So, I just kind of look forward to it. We have the equipment and we have the e-ball. Dude, I keep moving, gotta keep moving.
Secretary McDonald?
Fifty thousand dollars out of our trail pocket is a significant amount of money. And our budget is not fat at the moment. And I guess, I'm trusting that the trail manager and our chairman, I know they took that into consideration.
Yes.
So, the question I, I guess I've wondered about is we're also talking about doing the asphalt repairs, which is another significant amount of money. I don't think it's in this budget. Is there enough in it with all of our expenses? I don't.
Well, right now, right now, you're beginning the year of two hundred forty thousand dollars of fund balance, twenty twenty-four.
So, the plan is then to transfer fund balance additionally to this new budget? Into new budget here or this budget here?
Uh...
That's the only question I really have.
Yeah, the only, only fund balance you're going to transfer in twenty twenty-five, if you look, to balance that much out, we go ahead, thirty-two, thirty-three thousand dollars is our new fund balance. And that was accounting for the fifty thousand dollars basically in this motion coming out in twenty twenty-five. Now, of that, two hundred forty thousand dollars, one hundred and eighteen thousand roughly is, is assigned by the four county community grant, waits all of the donations, and they are profiting from that since March for council. So, when you take that out of context, you're left with one hundred twenty-two thousand dollars of fund balance. And then now that we've got the communities on board, we've got a hundred thousand dollars being contributed by all municipalities, which essentially carries your twenty twenty-five budget to be paid for. So, basically, you've got monies in the bank to do these repairs. And by doing them, you make this trail more pleasing and aesthetic and user-friendly than what, what you have if you just keep waiting and waiting. So, and that, that's council's pleasure. That's just my thinking is that, just like when we went off of these engineering design grants, we could have went for that, but you wouldn't have the work done that you have now. Linda and some of the people that volunteered, Dave Annerberg, Bob Brooks, and other people that have volunteered their time, maybe there's others on council, Mike, you might have done it as well.
Yes.
So, so my, my, my thinking now is that let's just plow forward, do what we can do, be aggressive, get things done, and be proud of the trail we're creating forever. So, that's the reason why, why I'm bringing these things forward. So, Counselor Wildly?
I mean, we talked about this a few months ago, the reserves and fund balance that we're building up. The intention is to do real on-the-ground work rather than just getting a piece of paper that says, oh yeah, this is going to cost us three million dollars to do. So, in my opinion, that is the purpose of our fund balance, to keep renovating the trail and looking to do it at lower costs than our competitors.
And there's, you know, I mean, for every individual around here, you have to be comfortable on how you would spend this money, what your comfort levels with the fund balance, too. So, that's where the council will say, okay, this is a good or not a good idea. So, Treasurer Pearson?
I just want to, you're not asking Mike and I to do any of this.
Oh, yes.
I'm checking.
I already got mine. Actually, I'm looking for Mike's run here. I'm looking for hearing this stuff.
We don't know a whole lot about asphalt, but it fits. You know.
Trail Manager Rand?
I just want to ask Mr. Watley and Mr. Pfeiffer. I know Matt's been on one, too. What do you think of thirteen thirty-five jobs on the walk? What do you think?
It's so nice.
So nice?
Yeah, it's...
Like, how hard?
I've been on a few times since it's done, I've been done already, and, uh, yeah, it's a, it's a real nice improvement. It looks great, feels great.
Dry, and scripts has never been.
No, no holes or any of that. It's all packed and nice, it's good.
It's all good.
Yeah, nice work, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I've seen some emails that have been received by Linda, and they're from people that don't even live in our communities that are saying, what a great job that you have here. I mean, it's, it's just tremendous reinforcement of what Linda and the crew's been getting done out there. And I, I just believe that these monies are going to be well spent, and then we're just in the maintenance board and continue that support going forward. So, that's, that's...
Mr. Breakfield? I'm sorry, Mr. Breakfield? Linda? Bruce might have slipped and made an accident saying asphalt will not be asphalt, will it?
Oh, no, it's going to be gravel. The asphalt repairs, the one in Oxford where the, it's starting to heave and split all kinds of things.
And the surface will be conducive for horses.
Oh, you betcha, it's going to be beautiful. Kathy is going to love it.
Okay.
Kathy will love it.
And I agree with Aaron. That's what the funds are set up for, is the improvements instead of just, wow, one day in our life. I say, let's get it done.
Secretary McDonald?
One final thought, and that is, is that I didn't ask that question trying to raise objections. I think Curtis, Curtis has done a great job on the budget. We didn't recognize that. He's put together a really good budget. Now we understand how it's intended to be used, and that's what we all need to, you know, be on the same page. So, I brought that forward, tongue in cheek, but thanks so much, Curtis, and Bruce, obviously, for your leadership.
Well, it's not that, I look to, I look to the others around me to say, this is good or not good. And if it isn't, you need to speak up and say, this is the reasons why.
So, that's, that's just on the service.
I need to give, well, we'll get to the next issue. But if that's the case, if the council's all right with this, I put a motion in the packet that will address all these items. If somebody wants to make the motion, if not, I'll make the motion myself. So, as you said, Counselor Pfeiffer's saying we'll do it. I move, had any future funding awarded from the MDNR be used for upgrading the Polly and Trail from Lake George Road to Forest Street slash Rochester Road? If funding is or is not awarded from the MDNR, up to fifty thousand dollars of Polly and Trail Management Council fund balance is approved for the upgrades between Lake George Road to Forest Street slash Rochester Road. Simple. Okay, a motion by Chair Person Wright, second by Counselor Noel, recite a, recite a little bit of funding for the improvements to Lake George to Forest Street slash Rochester Road. Any further questions or concerns on this? Hearing none, Secretary McDonald, will you please call Noel?
Yes, for the funding of upgrades between Lake George Road and Forest Street, Rochester Road on the Polly and Trail, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Mr. Madore?
Yes.
Mr. Breakfield?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Watley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Mike McDonald, yes.
Motion is carried. Okay, on to the last item on the agenda, and that's another request for funding, that's for asphalt repairs from Dragon Road to Pleasant Street, which limits probably one mile and a half.
Yeah.
And that's all. This will might be a little more difficult for you, but, but it's the idea that if you travel that portion of the Polly and Trail, you've got a lot of heaving in some of the areas there causing trip hazards or whatever, and then you've got a lot of cracking that's taking place. The asphalt was, what, nineteen ninety-eight, so it's probably twenty-five years old, there is like that. You've got some patching done, you're having frost and void, that type of thing. Linda, if you go out in the new packet, there are two quotes that were provided, put a procurement policy, the council has a right to waive this on that, so if, if you're wanting to go, redo the process and have this, this agreement bid out, if you're in favor of doing it, we can do that. Otherwise, she put two quotes in. Did you ask anybody else, Linda?
I asked two other companies, wanted to know if they remember their name. They never respond.
Okay. All right. But if you look at the quotes in the, in the packet, one's from BSI and one's from Hutch Paving. And you'll, you'll look at these and you'll say, well, BSI is seven thousand dollars plus, why is that? Well, in the breakdown, they, they don't give you what Hutch Paving is proposing to give us as far as the services for the crack filling and some of the areas for the asphalt overlays. But that, that again is a hit against the budget, because when, when you look at it, if these two items are approved, it's about seventy-five thousand dollars coming out of budget, up to, without, up to in all. So, so you have the other company that will say, yes, this is okay to move forward or not. So, I'll open the floor up to anybody that wants to comment. Counselor Madore?
I just want to say that Hutch Paving is the one that we worked with and did the parking lot at our office's. They were great to work with, and I think products, speech, it felt, it felt really well. And they're also doing Park Street, more of a main and, and paving project personnel as well.
Yeah. Vice Chair, Breakfield?
I notice in the BSI paving, they left a lot of items open in the air. It could be as much as they wanted to. It says additional charges will apply. They say that over and over and over and over again, additional charges will apply. So, they, in the long run, they could end up paying more money than Hutch, so just looking at...
Right. And I have something to add, if you, if you don't like these quotes, you want more, you want, I guess, trying to go and do a more solid goal from BSI, you can, you can bring this back to council, but I, I, I have no idea whether there's a better price on there or not, but I think the testimony from Congress is worth something, and also you could go see the product that they did at the Jewish parking lot. I didn't see, I didn't see any, break that through anything, look like...
No, the drainage is great. When we had a couple of those downpours, like the July tenth, when we, or someone, we had one or another, just watched it, it just flowed right down, what's going on, and they did all the engineering, they got, yeah, storm underwatered, a lot of replacement, new underwater, underground retention for stormwater, and all of them seem to be working with each other.
Yeah, they did, they did that basically right on schedule, I would imagine.
Yes.
Well, well, even with the weather.
Yeah.
We get the...
We had about a week later, but we had fewer things, fewer of the things that popped up, so we had a week project.
Yeah. Counselor Noel?
Question from Linda. In the past, one of these companies, we've had a good working relationship on the trail?
Uh, BSI had us workforce in the past. They did do a section of the trail behind Frost and Board, they did great. It was a very small section, and I think it was right at ten thousand dollars, ten or eleven thousand dollars. Ryan did send me a text that for, to do the same work that Hutch is going to do, that it would be almost seventeen thousand dollars, thirty-four hundred square feet. So, their bid actually comes in much higher than Hutch.
Okay, and at the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
You're happy with the quality of the chipbooks that we could make a good decision today?
Yes. I, I, Hutch is good. They're going to be in the area that's where we're kind of getting a discount price. If we go with them, they can squeeze us in while they're doing all the jobs on Park Street and in the village. So, they're basically able to kind of slip us in there. It's a one or two day job.
Counselor Wildly?
I also would say I kind of went back on some of our past work, and it's very fair price, so there are a lot of reviews.
You said a lot of concern with the approvals given, that they would start mid-September?
Yeah, I mean, if I call them tonight, they'll, they'll put a schedule. I think September tenth, they hand it open, so I mean, they can, they can slip us right in the show.
Now will close the trail a little bit for a couple of days?
They will close the trail, they will monitor the trail. We don't, I'm, I'll be wandering around looking at stuff, but, you know, we don't do anything. They close it off, it'll be a day or two, until it's closed.
All right. Will we look at for a motion? Yes. Counselor Pfeiffer?
Just, I, I think we're all kind of going in the same direction, it sounds like, but the unknown is something that I'm not real comfortable with, and so I am, I, I, I'm like, us having a real confident direction. And I did go check out his parking lot, and it really, it looks like they did a really good job. That thing was a mess, and it's, it's solid, it's not, it's not harder, like harder to drive than it is anymore, so they screwed.
Yeah.
So, I, yeah, just wanted to share, I think we need to know our numbers, and the unknown is, is too dangerous for...
And, and BSI does do good work, and I do, I do like those guys.
I agree.
They're very, they're very sweet people, very community.
Treasurer Pearson?
I'd like to make a motion, remove to approve the quote from Hutch Paving, the amount of thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for asphalt repairs from Drainer Road to Pleasant Street. Hutch Paving shall provide a certificate of insurance, including the Polly and Trail Management Council, and the MDNR as additional insurance. The Polly and Trail Manager, Linda Rand, shall oversee the project of the Polly and Trail Management Council.
Second. Motion by Treasurer Pearson, second by Counselor Wildly to approve the quote from Hutch Paving for the repairs from Drainer Road to Pleasant Street. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please, Secretary McDonald, please.
Okay, roll call for the asphalt repairs. Break, Mr. Breakfield?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Watley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirk?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
McDonald, yes. Mr. Madore?
Yes.
Okay, very, very good, counsel. Okay, very, very good, council. I think this is a great, great job. Support for what we're trying to accomplish. I'll move on to council comments. So I'll start with Councilor Wilder.
Matt's kind of already said, great job on the trail back there. Wonderful improvement. And I'm super excited to see all that stuff on the agenda. Getting sucked down.
I kept quoting you.
I kept quoting you?
Yeah, did I? Quoting about fifty times.
Yes.
Okay, you wanna get things done.
Gabriel Kelly. Councilor Pfeiffer, anything?
Um, no, I'd already hit on it. I'm real happy with the, the work that you guys did out there. Excited that we, I think we made some really good progress today. Frustrated about, uh, you know, the, uh, lawsuit, but it is the right decision and it's, uh, I'm, I'm a hundred percent behind that direction. I appreciate the history. A lot of you guys are a lot older than me and have been around. Again, everybody's looking at jokes. But, but it, it really is helpful to have your, uh, your experience and history with the trail. Uh, and I appreciate that you worked that in and shared that because it does make it easier for somebody as young as me that hasn't been around in law to, uh, to be able to absorb. So, and Linda, um, I, I, I think this a lot. We are very lucky to have you. I, I see you out on the trail, uh, sometimes twice in one day, working hard with, uh, with your help. And, um, and, uh, I really appreciate all that you do and, uh, your love on the trail, uh, it shines through. So thank you for your service.
Thanks, man.
Councilor Noel.
I just appreciate the comments and made a closed session. I'm glad that you hold the sticks and remember those seconds.
Treasure Pearson.
I would like to say, uh, I'm glad that we are, uh, taking on these, uh, lawsuits because if we don't, we're gonna have more and more of them. And I think everybody now realizes that the trail is a gem and we certainly do wanna protect it. And if we do lose it in court, that so be it. But at least we went to the wall and tried to protect the, uh, the trail. So I think we need to protect it every time it's up against something. So. And, and I, my family, I mean, as you know, we have probably one of the largest sections besides Ed.
Except us.
Yeah, and, and I, we have the largest section where the trail went through, and we had the most to lose. But, yeah, you know, uh, our, the grandparents and stuff wanted that property back. And here, um, now that you look forward, we're very happy. That trail is used all the time, and it's actually an asset. And when you look on any real estate, uh, advertisement, when you go to sell your property close to the Palladium Trail or Palladium Trail goes through the property or whatever, so that actually turned out to be an asset and not anything that you should be against. So, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Secretary McDonald.
I am, I heard music to my ears today when Erin finally got what he's, his agenda has been for getting the trail worked on and actually boots-on-the-ground kind of work. And I really gotta say that it isn't just your, your work, Erin, but it's Curtis's with the budget and, you know, the coordination that it takes. It's a, it's really a moving meeting for that reason. So, and it's been a pleasure working with all of you on it, for sure.
Councilor?
My time?
Go. Vice Chair, Breakfield.
Oh. Uh, I, it's been a great meeting. There's a few things I wanna bring up. If time, uh, constraints are okay, I'd possibly like to see NES on the next meeting to find out what's any updates. Okay, so if it's possible. That's one of the time constraints. They might not be ready for it to be on the agenda.
NES.
Another fence issue. That's why, uh, item number nine was the typo error because it would've been perfect with NES instead, but time constraints. Uh, as far as Lisa is concerned, without going through the full title, Rosati, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, is a fantastic law firm. Uh, they've worked with Addison Township many times, and we always seem to be coming out on the top with that company. They're very, very vicious. As far as the fifty thousand dollars goes to do the, from Lake George to Village of Leonard, between Bruce Pearson and Ed Breakfield, we probably ate up forty thousand dollars worth of our property because our starts almost to Lake George and his almost ends almost to the Village of Leonard. So between both of us, it's a lot of our property. I wanted to thank you very much. You know, are you planning on parking that monster tractor at our house?
For at least two months.
Councilor Mador.
Yes, and I, I wasn't aware that that was a bid for that section of the trail, like the, cuts to the village there. No, but it's just, it's funny timing because I just approved a bid to redo the crossing markings at where it crosses on Westbury there. We have two crosswalks that we put in, one on Pontiac down by, uh, OBS, and then one at Pleasant Street. People were in, and, and Westbury were, they come down, well, Pleasant Street leads the trail, that part of the trail connection. And so we have those two new crosswalks finally, uh, painted, street lines painted. And well, we have a price for the Palladium Trail crossing over there with that golden as well.
And the village is dying?
Yes.
Along?
Yes, I was asked, well, ask the Palladium Trust. They won't. We're just gonna do it. Save your money. We'll be right.
Then tell your, is there a timing bill?
Uh, probably next three days. It's PK. Contracting is doing it. Uh, we just, I sent several approvals to Dan and Randy last week for them to get touch with them, roll them into their schedule. So we asked for a twenty-four hour heads up so we can let the police and fire go.
Yeah.
I, I think it was like fourteen hundred I'd been for all three of them. So.
I saw for a minute here, but Mike and I didn't look, you know.
Do that night, it's less, less bad.
Susan Rupp, Green. You down?
I'm good.
You good? Charlie and Ryan.
Yay. All right. I wanna introduce John, our new kidnapped victim, I mean volunteer.
Hi, John. Hi, John.
He was riding down the trail on his bike and it tripped him and put him on a John Deere tractor and he's been rolling for me.
That's why I woke up on the track, you're running.
Yep, there you go.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been working on the trail. I've been using it for four years, all the trails around, and now I'm ready to give back.
Where do you live at?
I lived out in Pontiac. So mainly for me, it's Clinton River Trail, but I, I use them all.
All right.
Terrific.
He's got a, he's got a fascinating skill set that we will be utilizing.
Well, you're right. You're under the right person if you wanna work.
Yeah.
Or don't wanna merge.
Don't scare him off. He's new. Um, I just wanted to let everybody know ITC will be doing backpack spraying under their easements. Um, I did talk to Tyson and I did talk to Mike. Uh, they are going to be, they were, wanted to do broad form spraying and I said no because I'm working, I took us off to get, you know, some of the good stuff out there. So they are gonna be doing spot spraying out there over the next four days. So you may see them near or on the trail adjacent, um, they're gonna be walking it. But just to let you know, ITC's out there. Also, uh, as to NES, Sage and, um, Mr. Lincoln, Matt Lincoln, will be out on September twelfth to do a trail review. They wanna take a look at the work we've been doing and that they'll be paying us for. But also they're gonna be looking at a couple of trespass issues. Um, I did tell them about five thirty-nine Jocelyn. So they are aware of it, that it's not their property. So it's kind of one of those keep us posted, you know, kind of deals. But the NES is on, that we're gonna actually be meeting there, walking through there, taking a look at it. And they're also concerned about probably behind the NES as well. So, uh, that's about, oh, and also motorbikes on the trail. The village is out of control, um, with motorbikes. Turned out, they're village, basically. Um, I was almost taken off on Monday, Monday, uh, Sunday night, day and morning, I was taken off on the safety pad, um, the DNR, the, uh, the backside of their plates. They're getting citizens about motorbikes on the track. And, uh, I have to pay the plates to the sheriffs. That's all we can do. We've got signs and everybody's on.
Looks good to me. It'd be like it was workshop in town to make sure he's fully wear, fully, if he's selling them and talking to people about them, to be sure he's wearing them.
Well, these are actual gas motorbikes with children.
Gas, nothing like.
No, these are gas bikes.
Okay.
Um, Mike, Chief Mike, got one of the kids, and it's the same one that almost got me on Sunday. We, I have some photographs. I know where these kids live. They live over in Orient Township, Lake City. Yeah, well, yeah. So, I mean, it's not, it's not just, it's, it's everywhere. I mean, Amazon trucks in Madison are terrible. I mean, I probably have complaints at least three times a month of Amazon trucks out there on the trail making.
On GPS.
Yeah, well, no, they're, they're going, like George, they're going over, they're gonna do like Fordman, we're not Fordman, um, rolling. You know, because it's, the trail's in much better shape and groomed. And it's a much faster content. I mean, I, I.
No roundabout tears.
Just roundabouts. Yeah. So anyway, that's it. So John's gonna be out there a lot, a lot. He's gonna be, he's gonna be pulling her, pulling the trail. Andrew, my, my friend Bor, he's found love, moved down to Farman Island or something. I don't know. So he'll be around, but not as much. So John's gonna be picking up the slack. Yay.
Thank you.
You get some, uh, vegetables for your work. They're right here. You can walk and get those down.
He's got a better garden than I do, so.
Still.
Yeah, you have to take those specials.
Well, it's, it's good to have a group, but it's better to have a team. It's good to see this as a full council, working together, making strides. And we're not taking score on who's getting what for the advantage. It's for, it's for the whole trail. And it's good to see that we're working for that kind of good for the communities that are involved here, so.
Yeah, everybody running against you, it's okay.
Still time for writing.
Yeah, you forgot, congratulations.
I'm getting people that want.
I'm getting, but it's not, it's not for myself. And that's where, um, you know, like, like for the sponsor, I, I look to the, the other seven people in council, say, yes, you know, and that's what, that's what it's about. I'll present the information, give you my thoughts, but at the end of the day, this is five votes wins the decision on our council. Uh, just, just another thing is that, uh, we have some grant lines. I'm gonna look at potentially using them for designs on these approaches. And we don't wanna lose the money. We just wanna use it, and even if these settle on the shelf, um, because our fund balance will dwindle, we'll continue to look at it as soon as we can. And that's all, to the council as well to say, this, this is okay to keep going and leave this out. Until then, we'll keep moving, moving on. Um, other than that, Linda, you always like the last word.
I do, because I'm, oh, I never knew what. Um, I also will be looking for a bucket truck in Madison, any dump truck in Madison. So if anybody who's Pearson has any of those set items, I am appreciative. Or in connection.
No, I think I ought to take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, we adjourn.
Support. Motion by, Vice Chair Breakfield, second by Councilor Pfeiffer, to adjourn the meeting at four sixteen PM. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We call them. Motion carried. Thank you, council.